Folks, it's about 6 o'clock and we're convening the Bennington Select Board. It's Monday, August 27, 2018. I'm Tom Jacobs and have the pleasure of chairing the board this year. What I'd like to have done at this point is to introduce ourselves to the public, both present and on TV. Gene.
Good evening, I'm Gene Connor.
Good evening, Carson Therbuk.
My name is Jim Carroll.
Hi, I'm Donald Campbell.
Hello, I'm Jeanne Jenkins.
Hello, everyone, Chad Gordon.
And Nancy Lively, who is going to be taking the minutes as she's done so well. And Stu Hurd, our town manager on the far right. As we start all meetings, we offer the Pledge of Allegiance. And with the passing of a wonderful Senator from the state of Arizona, let's remember Senator McCain as we pledge the allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The agenda has been circulated and actually noticed, but I did notice that Citizens' Comment Provision had been actually moved down. We have our procedure where we like to have a Citizens' Comment early on, and I think I'd like to make sure that that happens if it's all right with the Select Board. I'll offer the Citizens' Comment-
Sounds good.
-at the outset. Good. We offer the Citizens' Comment for a three-minute conversation with the members of the community. But have in mind, folks, this is not an agenda item. We would welcome you to sign in, and tonight we have just one individual, Kevin Hoyt. Kevin, would you like to?
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Again, my name's Kevin Hoyt, Bennington. How's Aunt Mike better?
That's right.
You want me to sit? I can sit too. Again, this is-
We don't give you a lot of time, so you don't have to sit.
Okay. Well, again, this is more of a comment, and I guess I got one question, and it's directed specifically at Mr. Carroll. And please, Jim, don't take this personal. This isn't a personal attack on my behalf. It's more on, I think, your policy beliefs and your behavior. Frankly, at the beginning of the month, we had a very successful pro-firearms rally. And it didn't turn out quite as I planned. Again, I've been doing these things, hosting them, born and raised right here in Bennington, Vermont, and it's nothing new for me. Of course, this year it's a little different because I've announced that I'm a political candidate for Bennington State Rep. 2-1. But I think your behavior, specifically with the venue-
Now, I think we don't cast dispersions on members of the Select Board. That's not the purpose of this comment. If you have an issue with Mr. Carroll, you can take it offline or through the appropriate channels. We are not giving you political time or otherwise to involve Mr. Carroll in a debate that is not appropriate for a Select Board meeting. So if you feel that there's something that should be dealt with-
Maybe I'll change-
-please.
I'll try to change my wording a little bit. I find it very concerning that a member of the Vermont Select Board, the Bennington Town Select Board, finds gun owners would be bad for business. We had an opportunity to bring 500 people into town. I did that, actually. But Mr. Carroll specifically with some others-
Okay, you've just used your time.
Okay.
Frankly, Board-
I have to-
You don't respond. You're not-
I find it appalling, but thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. We don't respond to that type of thing.
I never made any objection, at all.
Okay. That is all we have for Citizens' Comments, though we'll move right directly into the agenda tonight. We have the Consent Agenda, which contains the minutes of August 13-
13.
...I'm sorry, and the warrants which have been circulated. Could I have at least a motion for the purpose of discussing the Consent Agenda?
So moved. Second?
Okay. Discussion on the Consent Agenda. Could I hear comments? Can I-
Nothing from me.
Okay.
Do you want to hold it, or do you want to-
Gene.
I have a question. I have a question on the last, excuse me, the last page. Please note, check 692 dated 8/30/18, and the amount of the $20,000, it's the $20,000 check to Vermont Partner for Community Regeneration. I didn't think he was to receive those funds until we saw some documentation of a credit report and a purchase and sale agreement, or-
There are a couple of things.
Property transfer? Okay.
Right. I would have the same question, because that is, the check has been drawn. Stu, could you respond to it?
Well, I understood that the condition was that he must have signed a purchase and sales agreement, and that he would have someone in the building by December 31, 2018. The fact that the check is proposed to be cut does not mean that it will necessarily be released.
But it was contingent upon a credit report.
We have a sign, yes, the credit report has been submitted, and that is fine. We also have a signed purchase and sales agreement, a copy thereof.
And I think there was the other issue relative, just a minute, please. There was also the, besides those conditions, there was a secured guarantee that had to be put in place before.
Zerwat, please.
Yes. All of those terms are being followed and observed. The check that has been cut is not to Mr. Carroll, but it is to the escrow account from which he'll make requisitions as he goes along.
So it hasn't been deposited. Is that clear?
The check is, so when the town gives out a loan, we set up an escrow account for the borrower, so that we're not just giving, you know, so that the funds are transferred to that account from which they draw as they begin to, you know, incur their various expenses. So no money has been handed over yet, although he has satisfied the conditions for requisition, and once he's ready, he can begin to submit invoices for our consideration.
So the language that the grant has been issued against the community development checking account, period, that's extent of it right now?
Yeah. So the funds have been transferred from our community development account to the escrow account for him.
Okay, great. Please.
Thank you.
Follow-up questions?
Yeah, I guess so therefore the money, no money, that money would not be released until after the closing.
The closing has happened because the conditions of the closing have been met. So I, he has admitted a fine for his sale agreement.
Right.
But it has sounded like he has a credit report and his terms for his signing on to the school are the ones that we agreed on about the tenancy and the building costs and stuff.
Right, but he doesn't physically, he doesn't own the building yet.
September 7.
I think it was September 7th that the closing, okay, so.
Does that satisfy the question?
I guess so.
Okay. Any other? I can hear, we none, all in favor of the warrant as presented with that inquiry being responded to, signify by aye.
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 Anyone opposed? There are seven in favor of the Consent Agenda being accepted. Thank you very much. I will now sign it. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the, it's defined as, or set forth as, public hearing, CDBG, Hale Resources. Who's going to be leading the discussion on that?
Zerwat will take the lead on this.
Okay.
Good evening, I'm John Hale, owner of Hale Resources. I'm from Shaftesbury, and a business person in Bennington.
Sure.
We're familiar with John.
Thank you.
I'll just say a few words. I'm Zerwat Childress, the Community Development Director, and I'll introduce the application, which is for Vermont Community Development Program Implementation Grant. As many of you know, the VCDP, or Vermont Community Development Program, funds are available through the town, so an applicant can just independently apply for these funds. The town has to be the main applicant for these funds. So in the past, you know, other projects that we've done are ones, for example, with Shire's Housing. I think there were many years ago that a grant was received, or a deferred loan, or loan was received for Abacus, I think. So depending on the kind of loan, whether it's a grant, whether it's a loan, whether it's a deferred loan, some of those funds often also, when paid back, become the basis of our revolving loan fund, as I've explained previously. So this year, for the fall round of applications, we've been approached by John Hale to submit an application for an implementation grant for $750,000 to complete renovations and upgrades to 219 Pleasant Street, which is a 10-unit multifamily apartment building. So this is, this is the expected procedure for the application. The applicant, the sub-grantee, which is what John Hale would be in this case, works with the grantee, which is the town of Bennington, to put this application together. The state then reviews this application in, you know, conversation, communication with us to ask for clarifications and any other questions that they might have, and then they make a decision, I think, at their board meeting in November. So this is, the information that you've received, the application is a work in progress, but we're looking to submit it by September 4. But I'd be happy to answer any additional questions that you might have.
I think we want to hear about the project.
Okay, well, 219 Pleasant Street is located on the corner of Valentine and Pleasant Street. It's a property that we bought on July 19 through our own funding. And I'm sure you all are aware of the older houses of Bennington, this particular one being in the historic district. We purchased this building almost at the value that it was appraised at, which was $290,000. We paid $285. The problem with these buildings is they need a lot of work, you know, to bring them up to code, to really make them into a marketable product to, you know, for young professionals and other people that, you know, of all demographics to have a good place to live. So our plan is to actually take this building and relocate the people that are living in it right now. It is full. And over that course, plan the renovations of it, which is a complete gut, new electrical upgrades and energy efficiency, obviously historic preservation, put in some extra parking, and really turn this building around from what it has been for the last 40 years into, you know, a true pride historic building in downtown Bennington. It's great for location. It's right next to the bus station, so transportation's great for this building. It's very close to the walking of downtown. You know, it's a, it's a kind of a poster child for what this program's about and what the town plan is about, and what the Bennington Housing Report actually was suggested to the town to do to improve housing in downtown.
So I should just also add that the VCDP funds, because they come out of the Housing and Urban Development pool of money, the federal funds, they have to be in compliance with the Fair Housing Act, which means that, you know, some of the things that John mentioned about tenants being relocated, none of that is done with an act of displacement. So existing tenants in the building are surveyed, they're asked whether they want to remain in the building, they're relocated because the law requires that while renovations are being done, that they have safe and alternative housing, but that they're given the option to come back, and only if they don't, do those units become open. So this isn't so much a case of, you know, John is going to go in, and got the building, and there'll be new tenants, but there's a very, you know, concerted effort to make sure that no displacement is caused through this process as well. And I think I've shared an email that we've received from the Deputy Commissioner of Housing and Community Development, which clarifies that there are, there is a five-year change-of-use policy that comes with these grants, that would ensure, that requires that the, that a certain kind of housing covenant is maintained for five years after the closing of the grant as well. And the town does have the option, because we are the main grantee, to decide whether we want to extend that period for a longer, you know, to 10 years or something else, just to, you know, if we want to make sure that for a longer period, some of these, you know, affordability conditions are maintained. But that's really a conversation for the town to have with the state as it deliberates on this application.
I want to make just a few distinctions, and we've been through this before with respect to Shire's Housing. When people see that figure of $750,000 for 10 apartments, it's a shock. But as I've learned over the time that I've been on the board, that the federal laws that guide the rehabilitation of these properties are what drive up the cost. Nevertheless, it's an infusion into our local economy that we would otherwise not have. And here's the thing that people need, I hope will understand, is that this isn't coming out of the town coffers. This is federal money that's available to anyone who applies for it. And for me, in my mind, you know, if we're trying to rehab, which is, to my opinion, a beautiful old home, and improve that part of our local neighborhood, I'm all for it.
I'd like to add, Jim, that these apartments, six of these apartments, will be available to people that make less than 85, 80% of the median income for the county as well. So that's part of the stipulation of accepting this money, and what Zerwat was alluding to was that that has to be guaranteed for at least five years. So, and, you know, that's part of the demographic that we rent to already, so it's, this just puts the burden on us to keep track of what these tenants make and actually report this back to the town that, yes, that's what we're complying with, so.
Okay.
And we do have the infrastructure for that as well.
Okay. You know, just to follow up and continue the discussion from the applicant's perspective, this is not available to anyone. You have to go through a rigorous application process, I'm told. This is probably the first for-profit that-
From my understanding, we are the first for-profit in the housing industry in Vermont to apply for this grant, yes. And we've actually been encouraged, we've been communicating with, you know, representatives from modular to, they've encouraged us to try to get this grant. We have the resources in our office to do it. We're really doing it on our own time to do the application. We're using our own funding to hire consultants to help us through this process. It is quite a challenge. It's more than I imagined, to be honest.
But the other part of this is that any landlord, private, could make an application-
Anybody can apply for this, as long as the town supports their project, yes.
And as long as they're able to meet the affordability covenants that come with the requirements of the grant.
I think the Board will like to hear, and the community would like to hear, what are those prerogatives or the requirements relative to the occupation by low and moderate income? Is this subsidized housing? Is this going to be-
I wouldn't call it subsidized housing. I mean, we do, we would accept subsidies that a tenant may bring with them, such as Vermont State Housing Authority or Bennington Housing Authority grants that are, or not grants, but subsidies that actually come with the tenant. But the housing itself is not a subsidy housing. It's owned by a for-profit company that actually is trying to make this building cash flow in an appropriate manner.
And what percentage has to be low in income?
51%.
Of the units?
Yeah. Which is going to be six out of the 10, so it'll be actually 60%.
Approximately, what would their rental, monthly rental be on those?
Well, you'd be surprised what the actual state funding, I mean, one bedrooms with everything included could be up to $900 a month. I think it's about $912. Rocket burn rates are $750 to $800 for a one-bedroom with utilities included. You know, two bedrooms are up over $1,000 to $2,050. We're running at $900 to $950. That includes heat and trash and, you know, all the utilities to take care of the building that usually requires the tenant to pay their own electric. So we are, our rents, that's today's standard for us, and we're well within those limitations of what the state is requiring.
Go ahead. Why don't we start asking?
You want to start at the end?
Yeah. Sure. Chad.
I have a couple of questions. First one might be for Stuart. Being a for-profit, this would still stay on the grant list, and then the rehab project, would it hopefully have an increased assessed value, so it would grow our grant list, or would this be removed from our grant list?
Oh, no, no. Even, even the non-profits that act under these grants are not removed from the grand list. There is a level of assessment that changes, and I'm not familiar with the formula, but I suspect that this will remain on the grand list. There may be some consideration given because his rents are capped.
Yep.
But other than that, he'll be paying the full boat on the taxes.
Thanks, Stuart.
You're welcome, John.
And are you anticipating adding staff or subcontractors locally, or?
Well, there's requirements that things have to go out to bid, and we have to have a manager on board, which we're experienced at, but we're communicating with other contractors to help us in this project. It's unique to us. It's a little different than what we've done, but, you know, I'm always up for a challenge, so. But we are, we've communicated with quite a few people. We've been involved with the Putnam Block, so we've met people through that that are experienced in this type of project, so we have quite a few networking that we've done already.
So do you, when you rehab the building, will all the units be vacated at the same time? Or do you have, I guess my question is, do you anticipate any concerns about finding suitable housing for tenants that are displaced?
I do not. I mean, we manage 150 units right now, so-
Okay, so it'd be-
We have plenty to, with turnover, that we would be able to place people in other apartments.
Okay.
And we wouldn't start construction until we had the building vacated. And they have the first opportunity to move back in under the, under the rules of this grant program.
When will they decide whether they want to move back in? Is that something that happens upfront?
Um, I'll be honest, I don't know the accurate answer to that.
Okay.
So I think they're given the option after they move out, but there's, there's quite a bit to it, so.
All right.
I haven't got that far yet.
Okay.
I'm learning.
Great. Sounds like a great project.
John, thank you for bringing this project. It's really interesting. I think the notion of the public-private partnership is what's kind of exciting about it. The idea that we could have private developers doing some of this work, maybe taking the burden off of some of the nonprofit developers that have been doing some of this stuff is pretty exciting. I think you're brave to be a guinea pig on this.
Yeah.
I think Bennington's lucky to have you willing to do that. I guess I would have just a couple of concerns, Zerwat, I might direct towards you or Stuart, but it's a little bit like the last time we looked at a community development block grant. I just would want to make sure that in accepting this grant, we are not excluding some other grants that we might also want to apply to. And I think the last time I asked you about this, the answer was, it does not seem to slow down the flow of grants. There's no, doesn't seem to be a per-community cap on what grants can be received. Is that right?
So for this cycle, we can only submit one application. So since John has come to us first, and we began this process already, we're honoring this request. But, so there's only one possible way that there could be a block for the next round, which is that if, when the VCDP Board meets, and they decide that they don't want to award this grant on this round, they want to see a little bit more work done on it, some additional clarifications to be made, then they would invite it to come back in the winter, in the new year, basically, in which case we'd want to follow through with this, I imagine. But there's certainly no requirement that once we, you know, take on this project that we're done for the year. If anything, it just presses us to put together a solid an application as we can on this first round. It's obviously a bit of a learning curve, but I think it leaves us in the long run slightly better off in terms of navigating something like this. And I do think the key thing here is, you know, whether it's for-profit, not-for-profit, I mean, the important thing is, you know, if this is something that allows or encourages a for-profit organization to really take an approach of, you know, is it just looking for high rates of investment for returning to its investors, or is it looking for those high rates of investment to, you know, put back into its bigger mission to develop other properties, blighted properties, which is, I think, how John has described his interest a little bit in Pleasant Street, and I certainly hope his investors will be thinking of it in that, in those lines as well. But crucially, you know, like, John has had to adapt to the mold of, you know, an affordable housing application more than the application has had to adjust to him in some way.
That's great. Okay, well, so I think that, and Stuart, I don't know if you agree, but it feels to me like this would not preclude any future Shire's Housing requests, or Vermont-
No. And if anything, I already have one request from Shire, so they're next on the docket, so John would have to get back in line behind them.
Right. Okay, great. I guess the second question is, and I'm generally enthusiastic about this idea, but I want to find out what it's going to cost the town. Certainly, there's some overhead and management of these things. If the grant funds flow through the town, is that an onerous task? Does that take a lot of your time, or Stuart's time, or somebody else's time? What's the cost to the town of managing this kind of block grant?
New gray hairs for me, but mainly, no, it is definitely additional work for us, but the way, I mean, we're the grantee, but it's always understood that it's the sub-grantee who will really be on top of this. And so grant management and general administration are two categories that are built into the grant, and John will be requesting funds for those, so that he, I think, I forget, Jim, if it was you who was asking whether there'll be additional staff, and you will be having staff who will be working to ensure that, you know, that all the kind of grant requirements are being met in a timely manner. I mean, we have the same thing, for example, with the Putnam Block CDBG, we have somebody who's focus is to make sure that all the, you know, forms are filled out on time, that they know to communicate with the town on time. So we've been very clear through our initial conversations that this is not my application, this is their application, and it's, the onus is on them to make sure everything is on time.
And so the administration of the funds, should they come through, would not be an onerous, wouldn't impinge on your duty if you can't get something else that's really important to us done?
I mean, no more than I'm already having to do, just because anytime we put in and, like, I mean, thankfully, we just closed two of our existing community development block grants, so that opens up my time a little bit more. But certainly, anytime we have to do a requisition, you know, it has to still go through me and Stuart. So, you know, we, it's not like we can wash our hands off it, but we're not the ones who have to prepare those documents. And I think John has demonstrated that he's really, you know, he's established really good lines of communication with the grant specialist at the state, which is, I think, a first really important step. And they're usually very open and, you know, helpful to answering their questions. I wish their web portal were a little better, but, you know, we can keep dreaming.
Okay. That's all true. That's all true. Yeah, well, okay.
Perhaps this was laid out in the memo, I don't remember. Is there, what's the process? Is there a second meeting that has to happen between the, now and the application, or?
We've always done that with the CDBG grants, haven't we?
There's usually a second application, so at this point, we submit the application, so this is, this is what we're asking today, is the Select Board's approval to proceed with the application. In the next, between now and November, the state's grant specialists will be reviewing this, going over this with their community development board. And I think if they make the award, then at that point, we come back to the Select Board and ask, because it's the town that has to sign the grant agreement-
Okay.
-so we'll be signing onto that. Right. And what, and I think even while, before we sign it, I think there'll be a conversation with the town about what those terms for the grant agreement should be, whether we just want to stick to the five years of the change-of-use clause, whether we want to add, you know, additional time or some additional terms, but they'll very much be in conversation with us about that.
So there'll be some opportunity to review the MOU, or whatever understanding you have with Hale Enterprises to-
Absolutely. And there's usually a sub-grant agreement as well. So, for example, when we did this with Neighbor Works, because we had, you know, loans that sometimes their borrowers have from the town as well, we had to have a special memorandum of understanding with Neighbor Works to make sure that, you know, our disbursement processes, we're not going to in any way conflict with each other. So one of the steps for the application is, or for the grant agreement, is that we have to get an opinion of council, so we have to run all the kind of grant agreement documents through our council to make sure that everything is, you know, really protecting the interests of the town.
Okay. Okay, great. And my last question, and I think this will be a quick one for you, but on that same theme, is there any other, I'm struggling to find a downside to this. It feels to me like money over the transom that's coming into a private developer that's going to improve in an area that we want to see improve. Are we missing anything, Zerwat or Stuart? Is there any downside that we should be thinking about that we're not?
I don't think it's so much a downside as, you know, I always find that the lesson for me is that affordability is a relational term, so it's not just, you know, I think in this community, we often think in terms of whether, you know, somebody's on subsidies or not. You know, first of all, I don't think it's somebody's fault that they are. Crucially, I think what matters is, these are funds that were designed to ensure safe and affordable housing to all members of a community. And I think we're learning that that community is wide and disparate. What we want to make sure is that as this community starts to thrive, we still have housing that's available and accessible to people who are part of that thriving, but that are also, that are also, that we're also making provisions for people who are not. So I think one of the advantages of, you know, longstanding housing covenants that often come with housing trusts is that they ensure that that quotient of affordability is predicated on what the need is on the ground, rather than what one is able to get, if that is somewhat long-winded.
And we'll have another shot at negotiating that as we get closer, in terms of the five years-
Absolutely.
...or the seven years, or the something like that.
Right.
Yeah, okay. I'm satisfied it's only taking so long.
No, no, there, that's why we're here, for this public hearing. A couple of questions, basically a follow-up. Um, I see the town's role maybe greater in a private context than they would be for not-for-profit. Supposed to be the same for both, but, you know, we're doing this for a private developer, notwithstanding the purpose of this application. Uh, I would hope that there'd be some consideration for the town's role in managing the, the, the grant, uh, and not just the pass-through. If it were a not-for-profit, I can see that, but this is going to be a profit-making entity. So, I don't know how we do it, but I expect the town to be compensated for its time to oversee this project if we do become the grantee.
In, in all fairness, Tom, so, our taxes will be compensating at a higher rate for, um, than what a nonprofit pays, so, I mean, that's part of our compensation there, is that we're still paying fair market value and assessed value, so, um, you know, and we're going to be on the grant list for a very long time, and that's going to add up over the years of, of us paying a higher tax than what a nonprofit would pay. Just a point that, you know, should be considered.
Yeah, but again, we're, we're not the managers for the private landlords in town.
I understand.
And that's the, an issue, notwithstanding the benefit to the tax rolls. Are the, is the property presently occupied with?
No, it was occupied when we purchased it.
Okay. So, presently, there are still tenants?
There is 10 tenants in, well, 10 families in the building right now. It's fully occupied.
Do they follow the mix of what you're anticipating for going forward?
I, we haven't finished the survey yet, so I really don't want to give too much, but from what we understand, that I think pretty much everybody would fit under the, the circumstances that we're applying for right now, well under 80%. So, and there is some subsidies that are on some of the tenants that are in the building currently.
And importantly, you know, I mean, I know sometimes it's difficult for us to imagine that this is the naive optimist in me. I think, you know, if those are families who witness positive transformations in their economic circumstances, then it's not like they get the boot, then that, you know, they, they get to remain in the house. I think certainly, it's just kind of recalibrated to continue to accommodate them.
But, at the same time, versus a not-for-profit, there's a profit motive here, and that's got to be recognized.
Also, we're going to take this as a grant and not a loan, so we would, it would be a shorter period of time that the town would be responsible to manage it, unless we'd be paying income tax on that grant, so.
I, I do think, Tom, you raised the important question of, you know, ultimately, the key distinction is what, what is the kind of outcome of this? Is this to generate profit for investors, or is this about, you know, sort of supporting the mission of affordable housing? And I think that's really the question in front of John as well, and he's, it's one that you're thinking through in some ways as well.
Well, our goal is to do more than this on Pleasant Street. I mean, we, we've approached other landlords and owners that, you know, may be thinking of selling. Our goal is to get some control of that whole block and actually do this in more than one building, so.
It's a, it's a thoughtful process, and I appreciate it.
It's a difficult process, but it's a challenge.
But, you know, we talked about, this board, about public-private partnerships.
Yes.
And this certainly seems to fall into that definition. I still have to, I'm angst about it, just to the point of, I don't really know, are we in this kind of a, opening the door for other private?
Well, good luck to him filling out the application.
Yeah. But I don't, you know, we have a, we have a need in town for affordable housing.
Yeah.
And the fact is that you've stepped forward in that breach. Okay. Jim?
Yes, um, Chad touched on it and sort of, um, what's your name? Tom.
Tom.
Um, and, and it, this is something that I've echoed in whenever we get this kind of grant money, and that is doing our best to keep that money right here in Bennington, using local contractors. So, my central question to you is, will you be managing the, the project?
To some extent, there is some limitations that I can't manage, and, uh, we have to bid the jobs out, um, and they have to be experienced in this kind of project. So, I mean, we do our best to hire local, we do the healthy homes for Bennington right now, and, uh, through the hospital, and we only use local contractors for that. This project is a little more involved than that. We will do our best, but, um, you know, it's going to go to bid for Vermont companies, for sure. Um, we don't plan on doing anything outside of state. If they're qualified to do it, yes, absolutely, they will be approached. I mean, that's the best answer I can give, Jim, and?
Well, that's, yeah, and it matters to, you know, me personally, and I know it matters to the people in Bennington, and you, as you just said, that we keep that money local.
We keep it local, absolutely.
Because it keeps generating through.
We do our best to do that today.
Our local economy.
But, you know, if, if you can't find someone that can do it here, you do have to reach out a little further.
And we certainly have precedence for it, in that some of our other CDBG funds have been successful in keeping the funds local. I think the key thing that I, again, you know, this is the kind of project management component of it, is that, you know, as you mentioned, Jim, earlier yourself, that, you know, there are costs that are borne because of the nature of the grant, so we do have to comply with Davis Bacon laws, which means that, you know, I mean, which is good, right? It means that contractors who are going to be working on this project have to pay fair wages. And so, I think some, it's just a matter of also finding people who are ready to, who know how to navigate that, who know how to keep the records for that, because we do have monitoring visits with the state when all these documents will have to be produced.
Okay. Thank you.
Carson?
No question.
Well, being last, um, I just have a few, hopefully, quick questions. Um, everybody's covered a lot of what I was going to say. So, first of all, I would just like to say, I'm on the board of Shire's Housing, so I obviously support providing people with wonderful places to live, because it is so powerful and life-changing. So, I absolutely support affordable housing, um, projects in this, in the town. I do have one question, and I don't mean this to come across in a negative way. You're a for-profit enterprise, I understand that. So, what happens, let's just say you come in under budget, you get 750, and it comes in at 700. What happens to that 50,000?
I don't know the answer for that.
Okay.
I don't think that it would be dispersed from the town, because I can't prove that I spent the money. I would assume that that would be the case.
Okay. It just seems like, for me, I would try to do it as cost-effectively as possible, being a for-profit, and I, like I said, I don't mean to insinuate that you'll do a lousy job because you won't, but there's that little bit of angst, I think, that Tom's maybe fighting a little bit, that I am also. Um, I'm just, I really don't mean any disrespect.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
I mean, we try to do that on every project that we do.
Yeah.
That's the, the goal of this kind of industry.
Um, I guess my hope would be, if you do come in under budget, and you're allowed to, that you'll use that extra money to make it even nicer, or put it into your next project.
Buy the next house down the street.
Right.
That's our plan, so.
Um, and I was, this is just purely housekeeping. Is there, um, a timeframe? Is there a deadline where you have to be complete, or it has to be inhabited?
Uh, the application requires us to have a timeline. Our, our timeline is to really plan this through the winter, and by the spring, be able to have everybody place the new apartments and start construction next summer.
Right. And if you don't get in round one, but you get in round two, it just shifts.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
And our plan is to finish before the winter comes. We, you know, the cost of construction in the wintertime goes up quite a bit, so our goal is to start in the spring and finish in the fall.
And is it on the east or west side of Valentine?
It's the green one.
It's the green one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is. Right next to the bus station.
Well, good luck.
Thank you.
Tom, assuming we can negotiate, uh, the terms of the, of the grant at a later date, which it sounds like we can, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, give this our conditional, or give this our approval for tonight.
And see?
Let the application go through with our support.
Second. Okay. It's your second, or second. Okay. Discussion on that motion.
I had, I had another question.
Go ahead.
But, um, and maybe it's related to that. So, the, the, um, change of use, the five-year change of use, um, clause, so, so that's a state stipulation that you can't change use in less than five years, but as a town, we could decide to?
Longer.
Lengthen that. Um, I guess, John, is that something that, is that something you're comfortable having a conversation about later?
I am. I mean, to be honest, we, we already rent, I would say 70% of our apartments to that demographic in, in average income, so, I mean, it's, it's not a concern at this point.
Okay.
I mean, if you want to be competitive in this industry, you have to match the rents that are out there, and the rents right now are lower than what the actual requirements are, so.
Okay.
I would see that as being one of the terms of the grants, that, that's what I intend.
Exactly, exactly.
And also, Tom's point, which might be some recapture of cost on the town part, if, if, uh, we can?
Okay.
If we can get clear about that.
Okay.
And, and Jean, just to clarify, the, the five-year change of use is, again, it's like the federal, um, requirement, so that in the event, because these are public monies for public benefit.
Yes.
So, in the event that there is some kind of, you know, departure from that commitment, that we would have the option to reclaim those funds, basically. So, it's to ensure that monies that have been dispersed for public good, you know, if that is not the end that they pursue, that window, you know, that's a window to let us claim that back to some point.
You know, that, that's fine. I guess my concern was that if we came back to you and said, "We don't want you to have a change of use for 15 years."
We can definitely do that.
You know, would you have, you know, would you then want to reconsider whether this was funding that you wanted to go after?
It doesn't discourage me of.
Okay, yeah.
That's what you're looking for.
So, that's great.
And to, just to be clear, I am the only investor, so it's myself.
Thanks, John. Any other discussion? Here are none, all in favor of, of joining in the application for the purpose of the, uh, the grant, recognizing that there'll be another opportunity to discuss the specific terms if it's granted by the state, the state. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
That's seven in favor and no opposition. Thanks, John, and good luck.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
I have a resolution that you folks must sign, attesting to your vote.
Thanks. The next item?
It's still me.
Approval of the splash pad design. Zerwat goes nowhere.
I'll just change seats for excitement.
You're going to have some folks that are going to join you. It's back.
Okay. Um, so, a few weeks back, I'm sorry, I can't remember the exact date when I was last here, but a few weeks back, um, I was here with Catamount Connections and the Grow Bennington Initiative to talk about, um, the preliminary plans that we had for the splash pad at Merchant's Park. We now have the, um, final drawings for that project. Sorry, they're not quite as attractive as the other ones, because these are for, um, the vendors, so these are the bid drawings, so that they know what exactly the construction for this project will necessitate. Um, as you can, just to give you a quick recap, the project is, um, Merchant's Park, which is on the corner of North Street and Pleasant Street. Um, it's a park that's largely, you know, a vacant space right now. We occasionally have, well, recently, we had a wonderful high school band that played there, um, but it used to be that the Tuesday Farmer's Market used to convene there sometimes, but, and there are also films that are sometimes shown, I think, during, during the summer, but largely, I think it's a very underused park, we can agree. Uh, but it also has this fantastic location. Um, just to remind everyone, we're looking at a splash pad, not a big water park. This is not going to be, you know, lots of big slides or anything. I've put up an image of more the kind of aesthetic and space that we're going for, a community gathering space, where there will be this beautiful water feature connecting, you know, the two ends of the park, but where people can come with their picnic blanket, sit down, maybe we'd have some light, live music. We've been talking about some lighting features that will be part of the fountain, so that there's some lighting in the evenings as well. Keep in mind that in the summers, the sun is out very late, so, you know, this will be for those darker hours. But to return to the plan, um, as you'll see, I can speak from here.
There you go. That's me. Yeah. It's there, it's a vibe right there.
So, the new design, um, has this lovely little fiddlehead pattern, so both to encourage, you know, some kind of conversation with our local plant life, but also to encourage kids to have these two separate spaces to play and explore. We still have the small toddler's pad, because playground design usually encourages that there be slightly separate spaces for older kids and younger kids. There's a little plaza seating area. Um, so the main, and there's also a stage area that we hope will, depending on how the fundraising goes, either more likely be part of phase two. Um, one new addition is that there will be a ma, um, a maintenance equipment room in the back and a restroom. There has been, I think, quite a bit of discussion of the need for a public restroom downtown, and this section is going to be built by the town. Um, the town is also going to serve as a general contractor for this project. Um, we are, we have just sent out these drawings to two, um, vendors who seem most likely to be able to do this project in the timeline that we're working with. We have the approval from the state to proceed on these terms without doing a big bidding process, uh, because of the singular nature of this project. Um, this, these trees are already there, so we want to maintain them and kind of create a type of alle, where people could walk through. We put in these little games on the, um, on the ground here. Um, what else? I know there had been some questions about what kind of separation will be maintained between the park area and the adjoining streets, instead of doing fencing, because we want this to be a space where people can see and feel welcome into and inspired by and access. So, instead, we're going to be doing some landscaping features with these boulders and bushes, some of which Stuart himself might plant at the end, we'll see. Um, so we're waiting, we've just sent out the bid drawings to the vendors, we're hoping to get a final cost estimate from them, but we're looking at roughly somewhere between 190,000 to 200,000 for just the main phase of the splash pad installation, which is this area, maybe some of this, um, and then this toddler area as well. So, this is going to be concrete, that I think, instead of it being colored concrete, it's going to be, what's, do you remember, Dan, what was the expression for it? The, like, spray?
Stained.
Like a stained concrete. So, we're hoping it'll be like a two-toned concrete here. Um, we have, just to give you some good news, I think so far, we've raised, um, almost $140,000 for the project. A significant part of which, almost 72,000 of which, has been fundraised by, um, the Grow Bennington Initiative. Um, there's been Promise Community, which initially committed, seeded the funds that started this project, uh, 27,000. They raised their match to 68,000. Um, and exciting, the exciting part is that, uh, the Bank of Bennington has, uh, committed $25,000 to us this project as a match. So, I know that Lynn and Kayla and others are working really hard, and maybe Lynn, you can tell us a little bit more about the fundraising for this match.
Maybe, uh, you could introduce Lynn and anyone else that's here from the, those organizations, so we can at least recognize that, how much?
Yes.
Maybe put them on?
Yeah, or they're welcome to come right here.
Yeah.
I know.
Come on up and get introduced.
Well, we have Lonnie Myron, Valerie Coulter from Catamount Connections, Lynn Green from Grow Bennington Initiative, Christiana Salem from Grow Bennington Initiative, and somebody whose name?
Vicki Giraud.
Vicki Giraud, of course, please.
And Deanna.
So, the Bank of Bennington was extremely generous to give us a, um, $25,000 match opportunity. So, this would be any funds we raise, either through corporate donations, individual donations, or with Catamount Connections and Grow Bennington, we've set up a Causefox campaign, it's very similar to GoFundMe. So, people can go to gofundme.com/growbenningtoninitiative, or they can go to, I can never get this, it's up there on the screen, but benningtonsplash.causevox.com. And so, it's really exciting that every dollar that we raise there, up to 25,000, the Bank of Bennington will match. This is a September 30th deadline, so we're really excited to get out there. Anyone that still hasn't contributed, this is a really exciting community opportunity. I think it's gonna be a community-built park, and that's very exciting.
Is this gonna be on the website, Dan? Can we get that up so that people can?
That's a good idea. I can't remember if we did. I think we did, but we can certainly reshare, especially now with this new match.
Great.
And I just wanna clarify one thing. When Zirawat was saying that we're talking to the two vendors, that's for the actual, like splash pad installation. We're working with local people for everything else. But there's just something with the timing of the Catamount grant and also the specialty of doing this, that we're working with the two vendors that can get it in quickly as well.
But the town has plumbed up to the point of, it's all plumbed in by the town, through the town's effort?
We'll be bringing in the mains to service the installation, but the, once the vendor is selected, they'll be doing a lot of the internal plumbing that is required to make these things function.
Great. Do they have expertise and have done this at other places? Is that?
I got a question.
Even in cold weather areas.
Yeah.
Zirawat, can you go back to the yin and yang fiddlehead? All right, I gotta get up.
Would you like the pointer?
Well, the feature, not like that'll shake or be drawn or catch or all over down. Will water features start here or will they be centrally in this area or, you know?
Yeah. So, I think anywhere that you see one of these marks, that's a jet. So, I think the hope was to sort of pull them all the way in, but also leave enough space so that someone who didn't wanna walk along there would not get sprayed.
Well, I gotta tell you, the ten-year-old boy of me can't wait.
I think Jeff Goldstone and Goldstone Architects have done a really, really great job with this.
I've got a sister with Down Syndrome who has never been able to properly pronounce excited, it's always upside it. So, I'm really upside it about this.
Is there a lighting scheme that goes along with this for?
Yeah, I think the lights, if I remember correctly, are mainly gonna be sort of centered right here so that it has a little bit of, instead of doing the full Vegas effect, we have a slightly more restrained but elegant, you know, sort of focused light in the middle that can bring attention to the park, but still sort of, you know, not overwhelm it.
And the other concern that you would hear about maintenance and security, this is gonna be a town responsibility once the project is in place. And I think we touched on that when we talked about the project before.
Yeah, that's, that's true. And we've talked it over with our staff, partially responsible for having the instrumentation issues that actually make the park work. Those are above ground, easy access, they're adjacent to the restroom facilities. We will be constructing that particular shed with funds that are already in our recreation center budget. So, this is not pushing us outside what we anticipate doing. And the maintenance of it, we are committed to, and we do a very good job.
If I can add a note there, we've looked at a lot of cities and small towns that have done this, and you can't overlook the power of grandmothers and mothers, too. And when people mess with these types of things, you get the wrath of the grandmothers and the mothers.
Right. Good. Point well taken.
I have one question, if I may.
No, I'm fine.
I don't mean to cut in front of anybody, but so, it's such a wonderful project that it's almost, again, just hard to believe this is coming to Bennington. So, for me to even bring this up, hesitate, but is there, are there ever circumstances where they recycle the water instead of sending it down the drain? And if this water does need to go down the drain, do we have any concerns about our sewage capacity for it or our water capacity for it in terms of toilet that's running all day long or whatever?
Donald, I can answer that because I asked it when you first discussed it with us. This is gonna be recirculated water in much the same way as a swimming pool. That's what you told us the last time.
I know, I apologize.
Sorry, Jim, I don't think I did because we don't have, well, we're using town water. We're not using a recirculating tank because that is just a much costlier project, and that requires very different excavation as well for the site. I'm not sure that it would be impossible at a site of this scale, but it just did not seem to be the ideal option for what we were working with. That said, I think that was one of the early considerations, is did we want to deal with, you know, the kind of the cost of running water versus did we wanna work with the cost of, the upfront cost of the circulating system? Two things that I do think Jeff brought up with me is that there were some concerns about the current state of the catch basins, but we are having a meeting with the Department of Public Works and Buildings and Grounds and the architect just to make sure, you know, what the kind of schedule of work for all, for everyone involved will be in the coming weeks.
Because this is stormwater, this is not going into the sewage treatment plant, right? This is stormwater, so it goes, it's stormwater runoff, so it's a separate system.
As far as I understand.
I said sewage, I meant stormwater sewage at that point.
Yeah, it's stormwater.
Yeah, but I assume that goes into stormwater, right?
Yes.
I'm hesitant to say that it will. Remember, the water that comes from the town is chlorinated, and most likely, this will be directed to the municipal sewer system.
Thank you, Stuart.
So, the volume of water has been looked at, and we're not worried about that?
Absolutely. And in fact, again, when they tapped the new water and sewer lines, Larry Gates was already in conversation with me about the splash pad project, so I think everything was installed with that in mind. So, we do have new lines for that site, actually, because of the paving project.
Other questions?
This is amazing. I can't wait. This is just amazing. I have two questions. How much additional funding do you need to do the stage?
That's funny. That was the same thing I was thinking.
That's a good question. We have, we do have a budget from Jeff Goldstone, but the budget was really created as if everything was off the shelf at full retail. We are looking at this as being very community-driven, and so, working with, you know, some gifts and kind and that kind of thing. So, I don't know that I know the exact number for the stage itself, and we have some avenues we're pursuing there right now.
Okay.
To see if we can get that cost down.
Every time I hear of Phase Two, you always think, will it really happen? So.
Yeah, I think, and this is not a complicated stage. He did a really nice job designing a simple stage.
Great.
But it'll have, I think, a lot of power to it.
Great. And the other question I have, I've never seen a splash pad, just the pictures that you provided. Well, I've been to Bellagio, so I did see that.
This will not be that.
This is not Bellagio, no. How does it know to come on and turn off? How does that work?
That is where it is the Bellagio, because it is the same computer system. So, whether you get three jets that just occasionally come on or like do lights and singing and whatnot, it's the same computer system, basically.
Okay, and then it just turns off at a certain?
So, once we buy that, we program it to do, you know, whatever, whether it's, there'll be, I think, foot pedals or something so that the kids can come and start it up, so it's not just always running as well.
Cool, okay.
So, we can set it up so that it only runs a specific hour, so that it only runs with specific kinds of motion detection. And that's the thing, is it's the same computer regardless of what you do.
So, you could have it set one day to do X, and then next week, you could change it? Oh, that's so cool.
So, our, again, like I think our Buildings and Grounds staff will have to undergo some training for how to run that computer, but yeah, it will depend on how quickly we learn how to use it.
The kids could vote, like, we want this this week. See, I'm 10 again also.
I think we're gonna have to keep all of you away from the project.
I didn't hear what you said. What?
I said, I think we're gonna have to keep all of you away and let the kids.
Jeez.
We can hold summer meetings there.
Yeah, exactly. It's a great idea. Some folks would say we're all ready wet. So, moving.
Can you just give a quick reminder on timing? I know the grant must be accepted by a certain date, and we're staring.
Yeah, so the grant requires that the funds be spent and the project, which we're, that's why we're doing this Phase One, Phase Two, so that the project can be for us putting really this in and getting it to a point where, you know, the sort of important component of getting a splash pad in is done. So, that needs to be spent by the end of this year, so December 31st, which, as you know, with building season and stuff, really, we're looking at before the ground freezes. With Jeff having now provided this drawing, we've sent it out to the vendors, as I keep saying. We're hoping to get estimates from them, hopefully even by the end of this week, early next week. And then, one of them has said even that if we can place an order, say by the end of next week or something, they could probably deliver and begin installation, starting from the end of September, and it would take about two to three weeks for installation. But we have to figure out from our end, you know, like if the town is doing the excavation work and other such things, like what that timeline will be. But it looks like so far, we're very much, you know, well on track to meet that.
Perfect.
It's kind of unbelievable.
Can't wait. Is this gonna be finished before Park 336?
Not going to answer that question.
plead the fifth. Other questions?
I wasn't gonna bring up the other park.
Yeah, yeah. You know, anyway.
But the other park only needs one day of excavation.
Yeah. We'll talk about other business. This is fantastic, and we're here tonight to hear and give final approval for the design. Hear nothing but accolades and promise of really making this a great focal point for our community. Thanks to you folks and the committee, you know, you've given your time and effort. Dan, thanks for doing what you're doing, along with Zirawat. Looking forward to the phase when we can have a, if not a ribbon cutting, we can have a, you know, whatever, a dive-in or something, a walk-through.
A weather room.
Right, right. Is there a motion to accept the splash pad design?
Second.
Other comments? Other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
At seven in favor.
There's a question out there. Tom.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Parking would be an issue for this?
Good question. Go ahead.
You know, I, I mean, one of the projects we're tasked with at the town always is how do we generate more activity, bring more people downtown. So, I think if it brings more people downtown, that's great. There is a parking lot right there, so there is parking nearby. There's the parking lot behind the town offices, which is also a very quick walk. At least it's my understanding, the parking study that was done by BRCRC indicates that we have more than sufficient parking. I think what we're hoping is that it will encourage people also to walk to some of these destinations or ride their bikes, and that's simultaneously what we're trying to facilitate as well.
And there's another parking lot behind.
Yeah, behind the cobbler.
Yes. Absolutely. So, there's, I mean, you know, again, as I always, I mean, maybe because I grew up in a place where people walked and rode their bikes and took the train and so on and so forth, I'm excited and looking forward to seeing that happen more in Bennington.
Other question, Tom?
You're gonna have to maybe step up because the folks at home can't hear your comments. I'm sorry. We should have a mic, but, because otherwise, it's nothing but the air, right, Mike?
That parking lot is utilized by Madison's, Your Belly's Deli, and the Senior Center. And I frequent the Senior Center, and I tell you, some days, you can't get in there with a shoehorn.
Yeah.
So, if you're putting this in there, the people are gonna park at the closest parking lot, and I do feel it's gonna hurt those places.
I think we should have to give consideration to our Senior Center, maybe reserve some spots for Senior Center within that, if we can. I'm not sure if it's a public or private lot. Is it public?
Actually, the lot that's directly adjacent to the property is a privately-owned lot leased by the town, and then adjacent to that is a town lot that practically doubles in size what is available. So, it's a combination of public and private parking that is available to the public.
Okay. I think we have to consider that when we see this on the ground, maybe make sure that our seniors can get from their cars and park right to the Senior Center.
But I mean, it'll impact the Madison's and Your Belly's Deli as well, their business.
Yeah. In parts of it, I'm hoping it does.
Yeah, me too.
Can we put some weigh signs up, like for other available parking, you know, for behind CCB or behind the other, the bank parking lot back there?
Even Rite Aid is not that far.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of.
People will find a place.
They will, I'm just thinking.
Yeah, but I think it's important. If we're gonna be putting public restrooms, maybe we can do other, you know, notifying where the public can park.
Could I add one thing to that? I think one thing, we talk about, we're always wanting to bring more people downtown and get more feet on the ground downtown, so we can't lose sight of that when we're talking about not having enough parking. Now, that said, I think it is important to designate some for the Senior Center, and we were excited that this is across from the Senior Center because I think that provides a great opportunity for seniors to actually enjoy this park as well.
Grandma and grandpa's with grandkids.
Thank you. I think there's nothing more. Zirawat, you're free to step away from the mic for the next couple of agenda items.
Thank you to all of you that have been involved in this. I'm just so grateful. I'm pretty sure I can speak for the board and for the town on that level, and I can't wait. Get it done.
Okay. The next item is, are the rules of procedure that, oh, Dan, I'm sorry.
Do I just see that Betsy Greenwall?
Oh, yes. Yeah, that would, we can use our discretion as the board members, and thank you, that would be really great because I think this is a very interesting discussion, too. Betsy, would you like to come up? Are you gonna be?
Sarah.
Sarah, yeah.
Can't agree.
Or anybody can, come on up. We're all friendly.
Tom, if you don't mind, I'll lead it off while they make their way to the microphone. We have a request from Sarah Perrin, Green Mountain Concessions, and Betsy Greenwall to close a portion of School Street from Main to Pleasant Street from 8:00 AM until 7:00 PM on September 15th, which is a Saturday. They have developed a proposal to use the Hart Lot for the first annual food truck event, and response has been so good that they are asking the town to allow them to use that portion of School Street for overflow to continue this event. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Betsy, and Sarah.
Yeah, we were really excited about the response that we got.
Betsy, maybe just get a little closer. Great, you gotta.
Okay, sorry.
No problem.
We have about eight spots in the Hart Lot, and this was the first year that Sarah and I wanted to do this, and we really didn't know if we'd get one food truck, two food trucks, eight food trucks. Dan had suggested that if we do possibly get more, that we could see if you guys would approve us to use School Street for the overflow, and the applications have come in, and we have exceeded our space in the Hart Lot. We really don't wanna turn anyone away, and the whole goal of this is to bring people downtown, and we were just super excited with the response we got, so we were hoping that.
It's really been quite amazing.
How many vendors?
We have a dozen at the moment.
A dozen food vendors currently.
Wow.
How many, again?
And they're not just from Bennington. We have people from Shelburne, Vermont, Scattered Coat, North Adams. It's been a great, I mean, Sarah and I have great connections, so it was a great collaboration. She was able to reach out to a ton of different vendors.
This is a great opportunity. Again, I've been to a couple around the country, and Albany Haslam, down in Massachusetts, Pittsfield, Lennox area. They are fun. They actually add to the community, and I don't think you're going to be unduly competing with the local restaurateurs. It'll actually bring folks into the community. It just gives that vibrancy, and the different foods that you would be exposed to are really outstanding. I've been hoping and waiting for someone to do this, and so, we can, I personally would support a motion to set that street aside for those hours.
I wanna just add that we have two bands. We have a cooking demonstration. We have face painting for kids. So, it's more than food. We have a few crafters that are going to join us that we're making sure, you know, we're jurying, we're not just having anybody.
Not the Tupperware stuff or any of that. It's more than that.
What about the insurance issues?
And we really want people to come downtown, have some food. The cost of the food is not expensive. We've had, all the applications are telling us, you know, it's between like five and nine dollars, and we want them to come and just see what downtown has to offer after they get their food. They can walk them down the street and go shopping, et cetera. And then, go ahead.
We've been very careful of the selection of food. We are not having pizza because there's pizza all downtown. We're not having ice cream because everybody, you know, we have ice cream selection downtown. So, we've been very careful of the selection of food, not, you know, to keep any of the food vendors, food restaurants, not to, you know, keep their business downtown.
Do they all have to have their own independent health license?
Yes, I have all certificates of insurance for all the vendors as well.
Okay.
And I have them right here. You'd like to send them as well. Yeah, really, like, you'd like to see them.
I think you should have some samples tonight. Otherwise, we will probably vote in the affirmative, but is there a motion to approve this process, including the street reservation?
So moved.
So moved.
And just to let you know, you know, Sarah and I are doing this, but we have reached out to all of the, the local, the Downtown Bennington Association, the Bennington Downtown Alliance, the Chamber, the Grow Bennington Initiative. Everyone knows about this. You know, we're doing our marketing as word of mouth and as best we can to get the word out.
This is really another example of the private sector, like yourselves, standing up and taking charge of the future for Bennington. This is going to be, I bet it might just be the first annual.
We're hoping.
And whatever we can do to support your effort, feel free to speak with management. I'm sure they're just as excited to participate as we are. So, we've had a motion and a second. I think you got that Nancy the second?
Yes.
It's always Jim's the second. All in favor of the venture?
I just wanna make a comment.
Yes.
I think it's really interesting, and needs to be pointed out, that everyone who just left, who has been working on the splash pad are women, as are these two.
Is that, is there a point to be made?
I'm just making an observation, that's all.
I would second that observation.
And you have to do it again because I'm gonna be out of town that weekend.
I know. Well, you're hoping.
Yeah. Do you have a question? Go, please.
School Street is bad now, now, as far as people driving up and down. And that was because of that difficulty.
Yeah, I define a couple of places in town, but I think by having that activity there, it might slow the traffic down and.
Well, traffic won't move.
It will actually close schools. Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
But we do have plans of how to close it off so that we can barrier that as well with vehicles.
Great. And it's a Saturday?
Yes.
So, you're going to be out of town?
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe one suggestion, I don't know if, it's been talked about rubbish removal with the town, but I know with Mayfest, Dollars for Scholars has always volunteered, so maybe a club at the high school?
I've already contacted Interact.
Perfect, thank you.
And he's already asked me to come in and pitch the project, so, yep, we're on it. We have, we have meetings constantly, we have a Google document with our to-do list, and it's been a great collaboration, and we're really, I can't wait, it's in, what, like 18 days? Just please try to...
Good weather, good weather.
Good weather.
How long have you been in the planning stage?
Couple months, maybe, yeah, not that long.
Not too long for a food truck festival.
Wow, nice. I'll be there.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
We never voted technically.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, we did, sorry. I didn't.
Yeah, then you commented.
Six in favor.
Yeah, right.
I had to say, I'm sorry.
Thanks, Dan, for, I think that was a good lead-in to the rules of civil procedure, excuse me, of procedure for the board, civil procedure, something I have to deal with every day. You, we had circulated, the last meeting, a draft of the rules that were in effect since 2015. Stu contacted Jim Barlow, who's got expertise in the town and government side of things, and Jim came back with some suggestions, along with a copy of a template that's offered by the League of Cities and Towns. That was not included in your packet, that portion of it, we did get it as a mass mailing, I believe, right, or something?
I, I can't recall, but it's, it's much more detailed, it's longer, perhaps more complex than the simple proposal that you folks had before you.
But Jim did review it for accuracy, compliance with the law, and his comments were appropriate. I would like, for the purposes of the meeting tonight, to have a motion to accept the rules of procedure as circulated and proposed by the changes with, by Jim Barlow.
And waive the reading?
And waive the reading, yes.
So moved.
Second. Okay. Discussion on the rules.
I do have one very minor edit I'd like to add, is that possible?
Jeanie's got one. Select board. It still says that.
Well, that, it still says that. I mean, I think the bigger one is when, is just if we're going to change the order, doing that at the, at the beginning of, if we're going to change the order of the agenda, doing that at the beginning of the meeting.
Right.
I would really like to add that.
That's why I totally agree. That should be the...
Other than that?
The norm. Yeah, the norm. Yeah. Got that? Stu?
Yes, I, yes.
I had one other, but I think it actually should not be in there, but let me just run it by you. So, we always have the sign-up sheet, but that's the way you like to do it, so I don't think that necessarily should be in here, because there could be a chair that does not want to use a sign-up sheet. So, I mean, I could go either way, but...
Yeah, I just sort of think it would be, we can, every board's got to get a fresh bite of this apple every April. I would think maybe it's just helpful to have that sort of a step-off, and also, I think we should probably put in that sign-up sheet that you're, it's limited to non-agenda items, and your comments are not to last more than three minutes, because I don't think our...
I also, can I just, go ahead, yeah.
Okay.
So, number 10 and number 11, if I'm reading this correctly, number 10 deals with items that are not on the agenda. Is that true? Number 11, it doesn't really say that. And number 11 deals with items that, deals with items that are on the agenda. I could be misreading that, but...
Well, it says during the public comment period.
Okay, so number 10, it should say, there should be language in there that this is dealing with items that are not on the agenda.
Yeah, I thought it did, because those wishing to speak during the public comment period 10, number 11 talks about items on the agenda, shall also be limited to three minutes.
Why does it say that?
It says, well, on number 11, it says, "Public questions," it should be, "or comment on agenda items."
Yeah.
Okay, for me, it would be clear if number 10 specifically said it, the public, those public comments are for items not on the agenda.
Because I thought there was...
That was stricken in the first line of 10, so that was, "Not on the agenda" was in that.
I think that should be put back in, just for clarity.
Yeah, for whatever reason, Jim, thought that was probably not necessary and/or appropriate.
You're supposed to infer if it is, it's one or the other, but to me, why not make it clearer?
Well, the, the public comment period is pretty clear. Those wishing to speak during the public comment period will be allowed, et cetera, et cetera.
On items, all you have to add in is, "Speak during the public comment period on items not on the agenda."
Like it was before.
I think 11 covers that, doesn't it?
Like it was before.
I guess that's how, I read 10 and 11 together, and I just thought that the public comment about agenda items is addressed in number 11. Maybe I'm reading...
I don't know why you couldn't combine them either, just combine it into one.
I think, really, there should be separate paragraphs, because there's two separate items.
Agreed.
The, I guess the real question is, do we want to be specific that these are items not on the agenda, and only, that's when, that only occurs during the public comment period?
I think, I think the clarity would help, because at other, at school board meetings, for instance, you're not allowed to speak except during public comments, whether you're speaking to an agenda item or not.
Or otherwise.
And we do it differently.
I don't have any particular issue or concern putting the public comment on issues not on the agenda.
I don't either.
Maybe discuss them, putting it back in.
Putting "not on the agenda" back in there, that's fine. I think you caught that correction already, Stuart, but we need to either pluralize question and comment or add per person in number 11, because it sounds like it's a three-minute period in aggregate.
That would make for quick readings, wouldn't it?
It'd be very quick reading.
Thanks, Tom.
Tried.
Nice try, Tom.
Any other comments on the draft? Because, you know, this is a dynamic document, you're going to be looking at it, and we can change it anytime, anywhere.
Yeah, I'm, I just think these are really good, it's important.
Thanks. Will you make a motion to accept it?
I will, I move to accept.
Second.
Further discussion on the proposal as amended with the highlights in the next draft, that'll, not draft, the next version will be without the draft, without the draft notes. I'll signify by aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Manager's report, it's probably gotten shorter.
Yes, I have only one action item left, since we've dealt with the first, and that's the, the name the delegate that will represent the town at the VLCT Annual Business Meeting, which is coming up in October. In the past, it has been the manager that has been designated by the board, so I leave it to you to name a delegate and authorize the chair to sign the delegate designation form.
A motion?
Motion to assign this to our manager, our competent manager.
Second.
Further discussion? Consistent with past policy? If you're not able to make it, can you send a delegate, a nominee?
I can, actually, you can send a designee.
Yeah.
Dan, you want to go?
Okay. Any further discussion on that appointment, designation? Hearing none? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And I'll send that down to Tom for his signature.
Great, thanks. Other...
That's all I've got.
Okay.
That's out of the manager.
Questions for the manager on the report? Hearing none? We have a liquor license application?
Yes, this is a change in lessee for mincer's at 735 Main Street, therefore, a new license must be issued. This requires the board's signature on the back of the form. This is not, this does require you to actually sign approved or disapproved, and I would circulate that for signature.
Thanks. Other business?
Sure. School starts up this week, buses will be returning to the road on Thursday, so if you're a morning commuter, maybe leave a couple minutes early, don't rush, don't pass the buses, be careful of the kids on the road.
And season opens?
Oh, we open Friday night, if you want to travel, a fairytale. There's soccer, actually, there's a doubleheader, soccer, boys and girls, Essex is traveling down Saturday, so be a good turnout for soccer as well.
Just check the board, right, on the corner?
Yeah.
It'll all be there.
It's been busy at the high school.
Great, thanks. Jean?
Yeah, the Creative Economy Summit last week was great. Zirwatt did a wonderful job setting it up and emceeing it, and it was really an opportunity for people from a lot of different areas of the arts to come together and think about how, how the arts impact our future, so that was really super.
I heard great reports on your introduction and your facilitating the discussion.
Yes.
If the court hadn't had me there, I would have been there.
Yeah, and then we also had a great Solar Fest this weekend at the Second Congo Church that really brought out a lot of people and a lot of interesting vendors, and I'm glad that they, that's become an annual event, it was really great.
And the Smoothie Bike is getting more and more...
And the Smoothie Bike was there, yeah. It's everywhere.
Everywhere. Go ahead, Tom.
At that event, I had an opportunity to speak to the fellow from Manchester who's doing wind power, and he actually would like to come and visit with the select board about the possibility of a renewable energy park in Bennington. Now, I don't know if that's something that we would have an interest in talking about, but it seems to me that it might be interesting to hear what he has to say.
Donald, can I just say, I also got to spend some time with him, so he's, he's going to come to the BRC Energy?
Oh, okay.
He's going to come to the Energy Committee?
Start with BRC then, yeah, sounds good.
Yeah, I think it's a good place to start, get the planning commission, maybe get their input. Anything else, Tom? No.
Chad brought up the fact that kids are going back to school this week, so traffic might be heavy. This weekend will likely see a big influx of people for Garlic Fest.
Is it this weekend?
Next weekend?
Week from this.
Today's next weekend.
Are we two weeks out?
Yeah, sure, you got me nervous.
No, not, it's this weekend.
It's this weekend.
It's this weekend.
It's this weekend.
It's laboring. Yep.
September 1st and 2nd.
Don't throw me off, I thought you were right.
I thought it was next week, too.
As I'm watching him set up at my house, he even almost convinced me I was wrong.
Apologize.
So, you know, let's just hope for good weather, that's a big impact for the Bennington Chamber and also just kind of our community in general, so, should be a good weekend.
Be there.
Maybe threw me off right there.
No, yeah, I was thinking I was going to be somewhere else, but anyway, I better be there.
Let's see, I haven't met the new principal at the high school, Mr. Nixon, but welcome to Mr. Nixon, and is that the only other new administrator we have? Laura Boudreaux changed hats, but, anyway, welcome to Mr. Nixon, I'm sure we'll meet you along the way. And thank you also, Zirwatt, it was an amazing event, it was really great. I hope we do it again, yeah. And the other thing, I'm curious about, is are we going to hear about the RFPs for Depot Street anytime soon? Oh, was that a bad question?
No, no.
Okay.
We've reviewed them, and we've actually contacted some that we don't believe met the criteria we were looking for, and we've reached out to a couple of the vendors who are interested in a similar parcel, to see if there's a way for them to potentially work together, and we haven't had a response.
Okay, so, maybe sometime in September? Great. That's all.
We're going to need an executive session for discussing a contract, contract matters. Could we have a motion to do that, because these are matters that are not appropriate for public dissemination yet?
Motion to go into executive session on a contract matter?
Second.
Okay, I'll get that right now.